I am calling to order the Monday, February ninth, two thousand and fifteen, meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Dana Point. Commissioner Denton, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, Chairwoman. Please stand and over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call for a roll call. Do we have a full agenda?
Yes, please let the record reflect that all commissioners are present.
Okay. We move on to approval of minutes of the regular Planning Commission meeting of January twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen. Any corrections, additions, abstentions, motions?
Madam Chair, I have a revision. On my commissioner comments, I'd like to strike having to discontinue playing music and have it say, and the opposition against Stillwater's application to extend their hours of operation.
Commissioner Denton?
I have no, no changes.
Okay.
And I'll move to approve if there are no other changes.
Okay. So a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, I'm not sure. There we go. There it is. Okay. We move on to public comments. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission during the public comments section or in an agenda item is asked to complete a request to speak form, which is available at the door. Would you like, from our Planning Secretary Denise, will you hold your hand up so people can see you? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
The completed form is to be submitted to the Planning Commission Secretary prior to an individual being heard by the Planning Commission. So if you've not filled out a speaker slip and want to speak, you should do so at this time. Okay? Any person wishing to address the Planning Commission on a subject other than those scheduled on the agenda is requested to do so at this time. In order to conduct a timely meeting, there will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of fifteen minutes for the public comments portion of the agenda. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking any action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. Do we have any slips?
There are no public comments.
There are no, okay. We move on to the consent calendar. There are no items on the consent calendar. We move on to public hearings. Item number two, which is coastal development permit, CDP one-four dash zero-zero-two-nine, to allow the addition of a forty-two square foot of living area to a single-family dwelling that had previously received a one-time exception for additions at four Marnock Bay Drive. And do we have a staff report on this?
Yes. Evan Leyen, Associate Planner, will give the staff report.
Thank you. We are just waiting to see. Commissioners, can you see the presentation on your screens?
Uh, yes.
There we go. Excellent. All right. So now we have the presentation for this item. As you mentioned, a coastal development permit for some additions to an existing single-family dwelling. To answer the foremost question perhaps, the improvement is only for forty-two proposed square feet. And so the question naturally becomes, why would such a nominal addition require a coastal development permit? Well, our zoning code stipulates that for properties located in the coastal zone and within the appeals jurisdiction of the California Coastal Commission, a property is granted or allowed one less than ten percent expansion in square footage to the building. They can add up to ten percent worth of new square footage to their structure and be given an exemption from the requirement for a coastal development permit. Anything after that, any subsequent improvements of any size, albeit even one square foot, requires a coastal development permit. This particular property, as you can see on the screen, was granted its one-time exemption from a CDP in two thousand and four for some thirty square feet. And so now with this new proposal for forty-two additional square feet, a coastal development permit is required. A vicinity map, again, the property is located within the Monarch Bay Homeowners Association. That's a built-out community of exclusively single-family dwellings. Our subject property circled there, of course, in red. Let me get the change. As I mentioned, the addition is for forty-two square feet. And specifically, that forty-two square feet is for an expansion or remodel, and remodel rather, of the dwelling's bathroom, master bathroom, along with the construction of an outdoor shower. The area to be expanded is highlighted there in green. You can see in those photographs there the location generally for the improvement. Floor plan showing the existing arrangement of things at the upper left of your screen, and then the remodeled iteration. I apologize for the quality of that. But again, it's a remodel and small expansion of the master bathroom for the property. In summary, the project, of course, complies with the standards of our zoning code, specifically the front yard setback for the property. It's also been reviewed and approved by the Monarch Bay Homeowners Association. And so finding is, all findings can be made for the coastal development permit. Staff recommends for approval as proposed. Thank you.
Okay. Questions? Commissioner Whitaker?
Did I hear you say that this also includes an outdoor shower? Do you, I don't, I didn't see that on the plans.
Let's go back. It's a little challenging to see, but it's right there. It would be in the property's side yard.
And I assume that's within the setback?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? No other questions? Okay. So a staff report? We have no questions? All right. I'm, we're moving to Commissioner deliberation. There was no questions.
Yes. No questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Okay. I'm now going to open the public hearing.
We have no request to speak for item two.
Pardon me?
We have no request to speak for item two.
We have no requests? Is what you're saying? Okay. All right. Then I'm going to close the public hearing and come to Commissioner deliberations. Who'd like to start? Commissioner Denton?
I, I think this is, you know, a technicality that we have to face based on what Evan outlined to us by the coastal commissions. I don't see any reason to deny the homeowner its ability to add this forty feet. And it seems like it would fit everything that setbacks. There's no variances required. Everything is, as far as I can see, there's no complaints from other homeowners or from the homeowners association on Monarch Bay. So I would be for it.
Any other comments?
I think the findings can be made to approve the CDP.
Would you like to, anyone like to make a motion?
Sure. I'll move a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Dana Point, California, approving coastal development permit, CDP one-four dash zero-zero-two-nine, to allow the addition of forty-two square feet of living area to a single-family dwelling that had previously received a one-time exemption for additions at four Monarch Bay Drive.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Please signify by saying yes. Okay. Motion passes. We move on to item number three, which is a continuation from the regular Planning Commission meeting of December eighth, two, two thousand and fourteen, a negative declaration, zoning ordinance, and municipal code text amendment, ZTA one-four dash zero-zero-zero-one, and local coastal program amend, amendment, LCPA one-four dash zero-zero-one, to amend the city's zoning ordinance to allow poultry, specifically chickens, in all single-family residential zoning districts. Since this is a continuation, the public, the, a public hearing is still, is still open. And I believe that when we last left this, the discussion was, I don't remember where we last left this at.
Well, Madam Chair, if you would allow-
It was a, we were leaving it to staff?
Yes, staff has a presentation to prepare, or to present based on the dialogue that occurred at the last meeting and to show certain modifications that are being proposed based on the discussion from the last time. So Erica Demquitt, Senior Planner, is prepared to give that presentation.
Thank you, Ursula. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. As was indicated, this is a continuation of a prior Planning Commission public hearing. Brief overview, in mid-last year, in two thousand and fourteen, the council received and filed a report about the keeping of poultry in residential areas. The Planning Commission received and filed a similar report with additional review of potential revisions to the city's municipal code and zoning code and the overall process if the city was to allow chickens or poultry. In October and November of two thousand and fourteen, planning staff conducted the, a survey and some other research to determine possible standards for keeping poultry. And then most recently, in December of last year, the Planning Commission held its first public hearing. Staff provided an overview and discussion on poultry and about, including frequently expressed concerns, such as no noise, odor, and other behavioral characteristics. Public testimony was taken. And at the conclusion of that meeting, the Planning Commission asked for additional information about a potential permit process if the city was to allow poultry, changes to the definition of poultry that was proposed at that meeting, and a reevaluation of the appropriate setbacks to the nearest adjacent residential structure. So as a result of needing more information, this meeting in December was continued to this evening. The permit process for keeping chickens was something that staff had to do some additional research on. We had done a survey, as I mentioned, but some of the information needed to be clarified. And what came to light was the cities of Newport Beach and Huntington Beach, both have permit processes in addition to the city of San Marino. All require administrative permits to regulate poultry. I've provided some brief bullet points for each city. They range cost-wise from a hundred dollars in the city of San Marino, two hundred and fifteen dollars in Huntington Beach, to two thousand dollars in the city of Newport Beach. Each city requires a site plan with coop details and a letter description, which was fairly common. Newport Beach had a thirty-five-foot required distance from the nearest adjacent residential structure, as did San Marino. Huntington Beach had a twenty-five-foot setback. The only city that had issued any permits was the city of San Marino. They had issued six permits in two thousand and thirteen as a result of a lot of public interest that was generated in allowing chickens. They have not issued any since that time. The city also contacted our local animal control and licensing department, or authority I should say, Coastal Animal Services Authority, or CASA. It was created to facilitate animal control, welfare, and licensing requirements for the city. And we have a representative, the general manager actually, Kim Coladenko is here this evening. Terrence, any specific questions a little later on? If the city decides that it wants to allow poultry, then CASA, in concert with the Planning Division, would be able to issue the necessary permit. They also reviewed the staff report that was presented for this eve, this evening's meeting and provided some feedback on the distance to the nearest adjacent residential unit as being better at thirty-five feet than twenty-five. So staff had incorporated that into the report. The other part that the Planning Commission asked for some clarification on was revising the definition of poultry. The direction from the December meeting was to include exclusively chicks or chickens, but to not include any other wild game birds. Our definition currently as poultry means all domesticated fowl and all game birds which are held in captivity. Staff is proposing to revise that to read poultry means domesticated fowl exclusively chicks or chickens which are held in captivity. Poultry does not include wild game birds such as grouse, partridge, pheasants, quail, peacocks, or other domestic fowl such as turkeys, geese, guinea fowl, pea fowl, pigeons, squabs, doves, or ducks. So with these clarifications that we are bringing back to the commission this evening, if the keeping of chickens is allowed in residential areas, staff would also like to remind the commission there would be some sections of the zoning code and municipal code that would need to be revised, specifically section nine point oh-seven, point one-nine-oh, which is keeping of animals in residential districts, as well as Title X, which is animal control, welfare, and licensing requirements. There's some duplication in both areas. So that would be cleaned up if this were moving forward. Specifically, there would be an insertion of a new chapter, ten point one-three, to include standards for keeping poultry, specifically chickens in residential areas. And that's divided into seven kind of categories, if you will. There's a residential animal permit that would be possibly put in place, a number of chickens that would be allowed. Staff is proposing six hens. Certain setbacks for the coops or cages, which, as I indicated earlier, would be at least thirty-five feet from the door or window of any dwelling or occupied structure other than the owner's dwelling. Coops and cages shall not be located within the five-feet side or rear yard, rear yard property lines, and no coop shall be located in the front yard. Staff's also proposing some language up at an enclosure, which is indicated there. Sanitation requirements, no outdoor slaughtering would be permitted, and no roosters. Because this zone text amendment would happen citywide potentially, there would be a local coastal program amendment that is also required for modifications to the texts contained within both the zoning ordinance and the municipal code. So in conclusion, the proposed zone text amendment and local coastal program amendment are consistent with the city's municipal code. And staff has a recommendation, which is one of two options, approval of the proposed zone text amendment to allow poultry, specifically chickens in all single-family residential districts, recommending its adoption and approval to the council, or to make a motion to not recommend approval to the city council of the same. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions? Commissioner Denton?
Thank you, Erica, for the fine recap. Nice report. Just real quickly, can you refresh my memory as to what San Clemente and San Juan Capistrano's programs or what their setbacks and fees were?
Yes, San Clemente, we had initially done a survey of that city. And when I contacted them, again, part of the, the survey, it seems, might have been in error. They don't have a permit process for chickens or poultry currently. Their code does not allow it. They do have a stipulation that references a hundred feet in their dog section, dog licensing section. But in speaking with the planner, they, they indicated they have not applied that to poultry and wouldn't, I guess, in this case. They do have a policy in their general plan that speaks to possibly changing the zoning at some point in a long-term approach to possibly revising their zoning to allow it. But they currently don't have that in place at the moment. And I'll just have to refresh my memory on San Juan. They have to be kept in conjunction with residential use, but lot size must be greater than fifteen thousand square feet. So their permitted species include rabbits, chickens, and animals of similar size. They don't have a permit process and no limitation on the number of hens.
Thank you. Also, do you have a recommendation as to what the, say, would be a fee for registering so that CASA would be able to recoup their expenses on this?
I don't have a specific amount. I talked briefly with Kim about that at CASA, and they have a small permit fee, I think it was eighty dollars. She may be able to shed some additional light on that. But we didn't speak directly about a cost, per se.
Okay. Thank you.
I may, Commissioner Denton. On that particular topic, planning's role would be to do an initial review of the site plan. It wouldn't really be very labor-intensive for us to review that. And then it would ultimately, we would check off on it to ensure that it complies with any of the standards that get approved as part of this process. And then it would be forwarded to CASA. They would ultimately be the entity issuing the, the permit or the license. The city is in the process of doing a fee study. So I suspect that this would be a new fee that would be included as part of that. And at some point in the future, there would perhaps be a nominal fee or not if the city council decided not to have one. But it wouldn't be that much staff, staff time to review from the city's end.
Okay. Vice Chair?
I was wondering why in the, in Exhibit A that we're taking, redacted is the section that says number of animals. And we're, it seems to be removing three or fewer dogs. And so now, all of a sudden, we're not just talking about chickens. Now we've like removed the limitation on dogs. So why, what am I missing here?
No, there's actually some duplication in our Title X standards. So this particular section where we talk about the number of animals in nine point oh-seven, point one-nine-oh is actually repeated in Title X. So over the course of time, the city's municipal code has been kind of, has a little more updated information with respect to animals versus our zoning code. So one item, as part of this, if, if it were to move forward and allow poultry, would be to clean up some of that. So we're removing some of the duplication. We're not proposing to change any of the number of animals or anything like that. It's just the, the way it appears in the zoning code really belongs in the Title X under animals.
Is that in our agenda, the Title X?
It's part of, yeah, it's part of the Exhibit, Exhibit A. It's not, I didn't include that section, per se, with there. But it is, we did look at that as part of this review. Mostly, the, the definitions is a large part of what's being kind of cleaned up. And then some of this duplication with the number of animals.
Okay. Yeah, I see Title X is here, but yeah, the dog portion isn't.
Yeah, we, I didn't include all of Title X. That was, that would be very voluminous.
All right. My other question is, this proposal, are we establishing a minimum lot size?
No, staff's not proposing a minimum lot size. It's basically the setback would be one distance between the coop and an adjacent residential structure, but that would be permitted on all single-family zoned lots.
I'm, I'm wondering why that decision was made because Newport Beach, in order to have chickens, you have to have a half-acre lot. And it's got to be zoned residential agriculture. San Clemente doesn't allow it. Laguna Hills has a minimum lot size of fifteen thousand square feet. Laguna Niguel has a minimum lot size of fifteen thousand square feet. San Juan Capistrano has a lot, a minimum, minimum lot size of two and a half acres. And it's got to be zoned residential agriculture. And those lots are off of Ortega Highway and Pepper Tree Bend, which are obviously not higher-impact residential zones. Now, they do allow chickens, this is San Juan Capistrano I'm still talking about, by a CUP, but it's an eight-thousand-dollar deposit. And that usually deters people, you know, from wanting to have chickens. So I, I was just, you know, I, I had asked at the last meeting to get this information on lot sizes that, because your chart here is, says determined by permit. And at that point, I had asked, well, can we get, you know, these, tell me what the lot sizes were when they were, during their permit process for these other cities. So I'm, I'm just a little disappointed that there isn't some sort of either minimum lot size here or, you know, I, I'm not even sure we have any residential agricultural zones within Dana Point.
No, we don't have a residential agricultural zone. Newport Beach does have that zone, as you mentioned. Some of the other cities do as well. They, when I was speaking to them, they have approximately ten percent of their city is designated in a specific plan area that allows poultry in this agricultural zone. They do have a permit process. They have not, to date, issued any permits for poultry in that area. But they do have larger-sized lots in that designation. Dana Point does not have a residential agricultural zone or something similar. But if that was the, the Planning Commission's direction, that's something we could certainly include. It wasn't in this, in this round of revisions.
And if I may, the, it's a controlling factor. So you can look at a minimum of a lot size, or you can look at setbacks, or you could look at both. In the first staff report, there was a lot of research that was done over numerous cities that was included. And staff had utilized that, that was prepared by attorneys who had looked at numerous cities and ordinances, provided a model ordinance, and backed it with scientific evidence and facts and data. And so staff looked at that model ordinance as something to recommend to this commission. But as Erica mentioned, if there's a desire of the commission to look at a different standard, that certainly can be recommended to the city council at your pleasure.
All right. That's all my questions for right now.
Any other questions of commissioners? Please.
I thought of it as, I do have a question. When we looked at this last time, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that there was a setback of twenty-five feet from any adjoining residential structure. And now, it's been worded at least thirty-five feet from a door or window of any dwelling or occupied structure. And that, I'm just curious, why was, I like the thirty-five feet, but, but I think it, it really changes it with door and window. So what was the thought behind door and window, adding that?
The door and window- The door and window text, that was included in the last reiteration of the staff report. The distance has changed, so it changed from twenty-five to thirty-five feet. But that really stemmed, the, the, the door, window came from our building code. So we spoke with our building official, and that language kind of goes along with separation between structures and looking at nearest window or door was part of that.
So to clarify and specifically answer the question, at the last iteration, the twenty-five feet was from the nearest door or window. It wasn't just twenty-five feet from the adjacent structure. So we've only changed to thirty, gone from twenty-five feet to thirty-five feet. That's the change.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I, I was under the impression, as Commissioner Whitaker was saying, that it was twenty-five feet from the setback. No, it wasn't, okay. Because the, you know, even though these lot sizes in these other communities are fifteen thousand square feet or half an acre, they still have the setback requirement. They don't want a coop right at the edge of, you know, against the fence or anything that adjoins someone else's property. So, so it, it probably should be setback instead. But anyway, that's, that's all I have.
I have one question. Are you, are you comfortable with the changes that you've made since our last meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
CASA is going to be involved potentially in the permitting of these chicken coops. Would they also be responsible for any sort of enforcement for non-maintenance? What would be the recourse there if somebody had these and just neglected it?
Yeah, no, they would be doing the enforcement for whatever gets codified into our code. So they would be issuing the permits, and then they would be going out and enforcing the stipulations and the code through that.
And what are their, how, what, what level of enforcement? Can they write tickets? Can they require people that?
I might defer to, to Kim at CASA perhaps to answer that if, if that's agreeable.
Currently, we have a kennel permit that we issue for any domesticated animals. And that's typically for the number of animals, the reasoning behind the kennel permit. Along with that, it's an annual permit. If for any reason there's a violation that occurs, we can dismiss the permit or the kennel permit. They have to wait six months to have another permit issued. In this case, it would be a bi-monthly inspection typically for the officers to go out to inspect the property. We would be looking at the animals being treated in a humane manner. And we would look at a number of items when we do an inspection.
So the permits are basically monitored and enforcement is ongoing?
Correct.
And I believe in Exhibit A, there are some specific things that CASA would look at to be able to revoke or, I guess, dismiss the, the permit is the terminology you use.
Pardon me, but I realize that we, we had an open, we had an open hearing and we closed it, so I do need to reopen that public hearing before we hear anybody else. Yes, no?
It was open, it's been open the whole time, and it still is open, so if we need to, we'll clarify, but it's open.
Okay, so we have an open public hearing, okay.
Chairwoman, I have a question for, if you could state your name and city of residence.
I'm sorry, Kim Cholodenko, CASA General Manager.
Just for the record, because we're audiotaped. Also, my question is, what would happen to the abandoned animals, you know, or poultry if, if, if someone abandons them or they're taken away because they're, they're being abused?
Correct.
What's the process?
We typically don't have a lot of experience with poultry or chickens, only because of our municipal codes dictating that. We deal with more domesticated animals on a daily basis. We would work with probably Orange County, that agency. They are set up and they are able to take in poultry of any kind. San Juan is, is in their jurisdiction as well, so.
So when you say your department doesn't have much experience with them, with poultry, does that mean when they go out and they're looking for abused chickens or chickens with diseases, I mean, would they know what they're supposed to be looking for?
Probably, well, again, not a lot of experience, but I think if it's, if there is an animal that's, that's ill or not kept in, in the conditions that we would set as standards, that would be pretty apparent. They're not experts by any means. Again, we, we don't have a lot of experience, but even with domesticated animals, we will, if there's a case that we're questioning, we will always have a vet oversee it. So if there was a question, we'd probably call in a professional.
And in, are you currently set up to give citations and for, specifically for poultry?
Yes.
And is there a fine that goes along with?
We have administrative citations currently. We also can send a citation to the court system. Those are two different citations. It depends on the severity. So it would be determined at that, at that time, under whatever conditions.
And then the, the whole financing of this, this poultry issue, is, is the cost going to be passed on? Or dog and cat licensing fees going to be, you know, used to monitor the, and pay for the poultry permits and?
I would assume that it wouldn't have a great impact. I, the numbers, I, I would assume there wouldn't be a, a large number of permits being issued. Again, we have our kennel permit system in place. It, it would be something, it, it's new to us, so we'd have to work on that as we went along. I, I can't answer that really.
Okay, so basically, there's nothing in place right now for poultry monit, monitoring?
No, well, they're, they're not allowed in our jurisdictions. So beyond that, no, there's not.
Okay.
If, if I may, for the record, I just wanted that section I was referring to earlier, it's going to be proposed to be in Chapter 10 of the municipal code, as Eric had mentioned, which is the section that deals with animal control, welfare, and licensing requirements. And there's a new proposed residential animal permit. And Section 6 of that says, "A residential animal permit shall be revoked when it is found based upon the preponderance of evidence that any of the following has occurred: failure to comply with the maximum number of poultry allowed, required setback from the door or window of an adjacent occupied structure or coop, cage or enclosure requirements; B, inhumane and/or cruel treatment of one or more hens; C, attraction of an inordinate number of rats, mice, flies, or other vermin; D, violation of noise and/or nuisance ordinances; E, violation of health and/or sanitation code; F, false statements on the residential animal permit form." So CASA will be, when they do their inspections, be checking for those things and can revoke the permit if it's found to be in violation of any of those. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that.
Thank you. Commissioner Whitaker?
How many kennel permits does CASA have currently? Because you have San Clemente and Dana Point.
And Dana Point, both cities. Approximately eighty permits. And again, the majority of those are due to the number of animals.
And they're inspected every two months?
Not those kennel permits. It would be if there were permits that were issued for chickens, that would be something that would be in place, that we would inspect bi-monthly.
Okay, and then, and, and so I think, is it safe to assume that, that the, for the, for the bi-monthly inspection, that'd be paid for by the people who have chickens or by the taxpayers of San Clemente and Dana Point?
Currently, I don't know. Currently, I would assume it would be the taxpayers, unless part of the fee that would be established would, would pay for part of that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Denton?
Yeah, this might be for yours a lot. When you were reading off those different violations, it, it doesn't see address or say anything particularly about somebody who let, that would let their chickens be running all over the backyard all day long and then only have them go into the cages at night. Is that, is that going to be considered a violation of this? Because certainly if the cage is within thirty-five, or outside of thirty-five feet, the chickens could be up against the fence and making noise and doing stuff like that. What's your thoughts on that?
Well, I believe in the ordinance language that the chicks or chickens cannot be outside of their coop without adult supervision. So otherwise, they are to be in their coop. And so I suppose that when CASA came, if there was a situation where there were loose chickens out and there was not that adult supervision, then that would be a violation. Yes, which would be, there's some general, you know, language about nuisance and ordinances and such that I think captures that. And if I may, through the chair, maybe, I'm just going to say Kim, because I don't think I can pronounce your last name as eloquently as Erica. But could you maybe just briefly describe who CASA is and, and a little bit about the formation of CASA, just for the benefit of those here tonight?
Yes. CASA is a joint powers authority that services San Clemente and Dana Point, both cities. We are, we are, control animal sheltering and our animal control area, both areas. So we have a shelter in San Clemente. Again, we deal with mostly domesticated animals such as dogs, cats, rabbits. We also have our animal control side, which works out of our shelter, the animal control officers, and they oversee San Clemente and Dana Point, patrolling all of our parks, residential areas and such.
Thank you, Kim.
Anything else? Erica, one other question. I noticed here that the recommendation from staff was two different resolutions, one basically yes and the other basically no. Are you, are you comfortable with those as, as written, based on what you've been hearing?
Yeah, based, based upon the staff's research and following up from the December meeting from the planning commission, yes, I, I believe we're comfortable.
Okay. If there's nothing else from staff, I'm going to bring up the, the, open up the, bring the public hearing again.
Thank you. We have quite a few speakers. First speaker is, it looks like Jeff and Borzak, Borzak?
Yep.
All right. Please state your name and city of residence. And after you will be Janelle Cushman.
Jeff Borzak, I live in San Clemente. Basically, is this how much time I have? Okay, thanks. My son, he's in third grade now, but in first grade, the, the, his school took fertilized chicken eggs and put them in an incubator and hatched chickens as a, as a project in, in the class. And it worked, so they got chickens. They got chicks, I should say. Now, the problem was that they, now what are you going to do with them? Because now they've got chicks in their classroom and they can't keep the chicks. So what they, what they did was they actually asked if there was any parents that would like to take the chicks home with them. So we volunteered, my wife and I, and we took two of them home. And we raised them until we figured out that they were roosters. And we can't keep roosters because they started making these noises and within, that's not going to work because they start real early in the morning and it's, it's not good. So we traded them in. There's a, there's a company up in Orange, Orange Park Acres, there's a pet store up there. You can trade them in and get two more, and hopefully they're hens. So we did that and we actually got a, a few more. So we ended up with five chickens, all hens. And we've raised them since that time for two years now, and we have them. And they are fantastic. They're our pets. We, we have, they all have names and they're, they're, they're not loud, they're not roosters. We get about four to five eggs a day, and they're the best eggs that we've ever had in our lives. They're fantastic. And it's, uh, become such an item around our neighborhood that they actually, the school that had that project to begin with now has field trips to our house. They come, they bring the class over and they sit in our backyard on the grass. And my son, who's in third grade now, gives them a tour of the, the coop and how chicken eggs really don't come from the store, they come from chickens. And they're fantastic. And they also, he also shares about, we have a garden as well. So he talks about that as well. So it's a whole, you know, an experience of, we're, we're providing food for our family through natural ways. And, you know, I've been, my profession is a real estate appraiser for twenty-eight years. And I, I, some, once in a while, I run across some, some homes that have dog runs that are mismanaged, if you will. And I think that there, that, I was really concerned about it because, you know, having chickens in our backyard would be, all the things that you mentioned, the concerns that you have, never came to fruition. They're, they're not noisy, they're not dirty, they don't smell, and there's no insects or pests that come around from them. So anyway, we love them. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Janelle Cushman, followed by McLean, Joel, or Joel McLean.
Good evening. I'm Janelle Cushman.
And your city of residence?
Oh, I'm sorry, Capistrano Beach. In a negative letter the city received, it states that having backyard chickens is just a fad. It has never been a fad, nor will it ever be. What it is, is simply an old practice of many years that is becoming more prominent. Raising chickens, hey, it's one of the answers to the national push for growing green lifestyle. You know, the people at Dana Point who raise chickens, most of them have been doing so for many, many years. They're experts at what they do. They are good citizens, and they are very conscientious about what they are doing. You know, they want to raise their chickens for several reasons, but mainly two reasons. For nutritional reasons, which I'm sure we all know about, or we should, and that's huge. And also for their sense of independence in pursuing what they like doing, within the confin, within the confines of regulations, of course. And you know, we don't really want to lose that right. Thank you.
Joel McLean, followed by Russell Bell.
Good evening. My name is Joel McLean. I've been a resident, currently a resident of Capistrano Beach. I've been a Dana Point resident for thirty-four years now, since nineteen eighty-one. I'm, I came to speak in favor of Dana Point residents being allowed to keep up to six hens in their yard. I'm a little dubious about it now, having seen how the back and forth is, what the realities of it, apparently the concerns of the planning commissioners are, is ludicrous. I have been helping my wife care for chickens at the Ecology Center in San Juan Capistrano for about four years now. Have any of the commissioners actually spent any time around chickens? That's just an overhead question. Because hens, unlike roosters, are very quiet, they are not dirty, they eat insects. Talking, somebody was mentioning whether they were, they were concerned that hens would be allowed to roam around just willy-nilly in somebody's backyard. A hen against a fence makes a lot less noise, a lot A hen against a fence makes a lot less noise, a lot less smell, does a lot less damage. I mean, it's not even comparable to the dogs in my neighborhood that bark at each other and bark because they are, because they're ignored for most of the day. So the fact that CASA doesn't do inspections on their kennel permits, I think that chickens are a lot more self-sustaining and will present a lot less of an environmental or social problem. I think probably just since we're spitballing it here, that if you're not hearing from neighbors that chickens are causing a problem on a lot fifteen thousand square feet or smaller, then there's not apt to be a problem. Because, as I said, with the dogs that bark, the cats that use my backyard as a bathroom that obviously belong to somebody, chickens, not even the same ballpark. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Russell Bell, followed by Matthew, looks like McKinney.
Hey. Hello, Commissioners, thank you for your time. I'm a former resident of Capistrano Beach and then I moved across the border to San Clemente. I'm a fan of chickens. I raised them for several years, won a lot of awards, and and they were truly free-range chickens. But but the difference was that was on a farm and I was in a rural area. And now I live in San Clemente, I live in a more congested area. And I can say that personal experience is chickens make lousy butts. I could make a much better argument for goats, they can mow your lawn and and you can get milk out of them and all that kind of stuff, but that's a different conversation. I do appreciate the nostalgic desire for a green acres lifestyle. I have it myself, but that's not where I live. It's it's really not a reality in our congested coastal communities. My experience with years of chickens is that they contrary to what's, my my personal experience is that they are noisy, they do smell, they do make a mess because because chickens are biological creatures. Especially in our area, chickens do do attract pests, they attract rodents, skunks like to come and try to eat the chickens, raccoons want to come and eat the chickens, you name it, they'll come. And and you have to be careful with chickens, of course, for the concern about disease. My my reason for being here is being in San Clemente, I don't want to see the border creep come across, if Dana Point changes changes your guidelines, I don't want to see it come across into San Clemente. I would like my three boys to have chickens, but that would mean I'd really need to move to a farm. And we don't live on a farm, we're in San Clemente. I'm concerned about property values. People come and buy properties based on existing regulations and setbacks and and rules. And when those change, then I it affects property values. And my concern, especially based on the conversation tonight, is that enforcement of the looser guidelines would be problematic and it would be of of an added cost to any city that has these things. I don't think the cost would would nearly be covered by the by the fees that that they would that they would collect for permits. I think, you know, sustainable self-sufficiency is great, we have a garden, we raise herbs, we raise tomatoes, you know, all that sort of thing, but we don't raise cows and horses and chickens and and pigs because, again, that's just not where we live. I'm in I'm in favor of things that fit our community and and the expectations that we have in living in a more congested coastal community. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew McKinney, followed by Jake? I'm not sure. But go ahead, please state your name and city of residence.
Matthew McKinney, Dana Point resident. And I grew up also on a on a five acre farm type residence and everybody had chickens, everyone had a couple of pigs, we had a Shetland pony as well as a cow. And the chickens were by far the least maintenance and least worry. We, a lot of the, my siblings were were in charge of taking care of those, but they weren't allowed around the other animals by themselves. But moving towards a closer knit community, it leaves a lot of things in question as to whether the that this type of structure and maintenance of of chickens can be housed without conflict with neighbors. And I, talking about property values, I'm also concerned about whether these looser restrictions would allow more people to bring values down in those environments because not many people viewing a a home would 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 call that desirable, having chickens next door. So that's that's just where I stand on that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jake, looks like M something. Okay. Please state your name and city of residence and after you it will be Kim.
Okay. My name is Jacob Muhai, I live in Dana Point. I'm a civil engineer. I grew up in Tacoma, Washington, where my family had an acre or two of land, so did my neighbors, who raised chickens. In my opinion, it it was the the right place to raise chickens. Being in a coastal community, I don't, I don't think it's the it's the right place to have chickens, especially to, especially so close when homes, when there's not very much land. And so that's that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. And it must be your relation, Kim?
Why, I'll get her.
Okay. Welcome. Please state your name and city of residence.
My name's Kim Muhai and I'm a resident of Dana Point. I am not in favor of chickens coming to Dana Point permanently. I think that there is a place for them to be, it's not in Dana Point, where we have a coastal community, it's suburban and it creates a lot of noise. I I've lived in Hawaii before and I love animals and it was wonderful, like having chickens wandering around there and it was the right place and I'm an animal lover. But I think that it would negatively impact the citizens, especially the homeowners that live around here and they have invested in their future and potentially their retirement. And if it could in any way impact negatively the value of their home, I'm, and I think this is just affecting people long term. So if somebody is really passionate about owning chickens, then I think there's definitely places that they can live and where that is already existing laws. And I would encourage them to look for other options or different pets that are not quite as noisy because I did experience, I was a college student in Hawaii, so I did experience loud chickens wiggling me early in the morning. But I I kind of loved that aspect of living in Hawaii and being surrounded by that, but I don't think that that is the best, the suburban community is the best place for that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chad George, followed by Karen George.
According to the proposed.
Name and city of residence, please.
Chad George, Capistrano Beach.
Thank you.
According to the proposal prepared by the city, which we've made reference to this evening, the homes located at two six five oh two, two six five one two, two six five four two, Avenue de Las Palmas, and two six five one one, Palisades Drive, all of which at one time or another have displayed the we support hens in Dana Point signs, and three still do, would qualify for a permit to raise up to six chickens on their property. Should that occur, the home which my wife and I have lived in for nineteen years would be surrounded by twenty-four chickens. It would no longer be possible for us to remain happily in our home. To make matters worse, the permit requirement in the current proposal would dictate that we disclose to any potential buyer that the adjacent, the adjacent properties are legally permitted to house up to six chickens each. Home buyers are drawn to Dana Point for its close proximity to the Pacific Ocean, not to be close to chickens. It is impossible for me to imagine a beach-oriented buyer being interested in such a property at any price. I asked the commissioners here tonight if they would be interested in purchasing a home surrounded by twenty-four chickens. I asked the commissioners, is it just to ask any homeowner to jeopardize home equity to accommodate the current fad of backyard chickens? I do not support changing the current zoning laws, which have served the city well. In the event that the commissions, excuse me, the commissioners feel compelled to change the zoning laws, I would urge you to follow the one hundred foot rule in San Clemente, which according to the former San Clemente Mayor Doncheck allows up to six chickens, but only if the coop is positioned one hundred feet from neighboring homes. That appears in their ordinances and it appears in the Orange County Register. Or our neighbor San Juan Capistrano, a fifteen thousand square foot lot, or Newport Beach, a half acre. There is, there must be a responsible way to approach this and I ask you to please consider that. Thank you.
Carolina Mora, followed by Karen George. Oh, wait, did I, I mixed them up? Either way.
My name is Carolina Mora and I live in Capistrano Beach. I just wanted to say that I I grew up an hour and a half north of here in Rolling Hills Estates and I had quite a magical childhood with horses and goats and bunnies and chickens and it was amazing. And I would love to provide that for my three boys, but living in Capistrano Beach with my neighbors so close, I I don't have any chickens and I don't want any where I live now and I sure don't want my neighbors to have any where I am now. And so I I hope it, I hope it doesn't pass. Thanks.
Thank you. Karen George, followed by Tracy Terry. Hopefully this injury wasn't from tripping over a chicken or something.
It could have been, though. Trust me, it could have been, it very well could have been. Hopefully it won't happen in the future.
Name and city of residence?
Yes. My name is Karen George, live in Capistrano Beach, section of Dana Point, and my husband and I have lived here almost twenty years. I have a few thought, a few chicken thought questions for all of you commissioners to ponder. What percentage of the population of Dana Point do you suppose is actually in favor of living side by side with chickens? My guess is that the vast majority of Dana Point residents is completely unaware of the move to permit chickens. Chicken proponents would have you believe that chickens are quiet, but our family knows differently from personal experience, actually over about ten months when our neighbors had chickens. Two of our neighbors' chickens were super cluckers. They regularly started clucking at the crack of dawn, often they clucked loudly, nonstop for twenty to thirty minutes. One resident of that household, the very household with the chickens, said to us one day that two of their chickens were quote, "really noisy girls," unquote. Do you personally like to be able to relax and enjoy the tranquility of your own home? Would you like to be awakened every morning at the crack of dawn by cackling chickens? And how do you feel about rats? It's no secret that rats and other critters are attracted by chicken feed and water. If the chicken feed and water are secure from rodents, as the proposed ordinance requires, then disappointed hungry rats that were attracted by the scent of the chicken's food and drink will visit neighboring human homes to snack and sleep. In the twenty years we've lived in our our home, we've never had rats come inside our house until the chickens arrived, just next door. Just last year, our sixteen-year-old daughter had a huge rat invade her bedroom and that was totally gross, I have to say. And a family of rats took up residence in our garage and attic, one rat even in our pantry. This was a first. So why the rush to go from chickens being one hundred percent prohibited to permitting six chickens within a scant thirty-five feet of human homes? If this happens, by the time the city realizes that thirty-five feet is too short a distance, it will be virtually impossible to tighten up the law. If neighborhood harmony is important, why not take a cautious approach? Wouldn't it make sense to adopt the same policy as San Clemente? We are neighbors after all. For some reason, the most recent Dana Point Community Development Report says that chickens are not permitted in San Clemente. But the code section given to me by a San Clemente code compliance officer just last week reveals that San Clemente does permit the keeping of chickens, provided they are kept more than one hundred feet from neighbors' homes. And I have the code section number. And in fact, former San Clemente Mayor Doncheck clarified the San Clemente law plainly in her official mayor's blog, which was later reprinted in the OC Register. I have copies of that for all of you. If Dana Point insists on allowing chickens, why not start out cautiously? Partner with San Clemente in requiring that chickens be kept at least a hundred feet from human habitations? Why rush to allow chickens to defecate and cluck within thirty-five feet of your dining room or your bed? I strongly urge the Dana Point Planning Commission to maintain its current no-chicken policy. But if Dana Point does decide to allow them, please adopt a more respectful, cautious, common sense, one hundred percent, one hundred feet foot approach that our neighbor San Clemente has taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have copies of San Clemente Mayor Doncheck, what she had to say on her official mayor's blog about chickens.
All right, you can hand it to the planning secretary and then we'll take a look at it.
That'd be super. She spells it out, hundred feet, you know, no more than six chickens, hundred feet from neighbors.
Tracy Terry, followed by Frances Sasson.
Hi, I'm Tracy Terry. I live in San Clemente and I live on a single loaded street and we have a very substantial slope. And so one of my neighbors has a chicken coop halfway down our slope, which is considered, they say it's about a half acre. And he's under the understanding that you're allowed to have chickens within a hundred feet. So he did measure from like either side of him and across the street to the house below us. And so with that knowledge, he built his chicken coop and he has six chickens, they're all hens, of course. And we also live by the freeway, so we have a lot of noise going on. And he was amazed that the neighbor across the street down the hill from us complained about the chickens. And he's just like, I don't understand, he can't hear them, I can't hear them. We are above the chicken coop and I don't know if that makes a difference. But the neighbors below have continually pleaded with them to move the chickens. But he spent a lot of money making this chicken coop. So eventually the neighbors called the city of San Clemente and a representative came out and measured and it exceeded the hundred feet requirement. And he told the owner, my neighbor, you're within your legal rights to have these chickens so you can keep them. But it is unfortunate that there's, the other neighbors have to live hearing the little clucking. I guess they do the little guttural, like, cluck, 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 all day long. But I, he said when they do lay their eggs, which are generally early, that it's a little more of a yelp. And so he's thinking that's what they're hearing in their bedroom in the morning. So anyway, that was just a consideration you might want to take and that's just an experience that I've had, that my neighbor shared with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Frances Sasson, followed by Russell Bell, but I think you already spoke.
Good evening. My name is Francie Sasson. I'm a resident of Capistrano Beach for over twenty-five years and I'm also veterinarian. I've started practicing here when I first got out of school about twenty-five years ago and did spend a number of years at a practice here in Capistrano Beach. Currently, I do work with CASA on a volunteer basis and I also do see some private clients for avian and exotic. So that was one of my areas of practice when I was practicing here. And so I am here to tell you that I am in support of the ordinance changes to allow the hens. When I first read the ordinances back, kind of when this was first coming into more of the public view, it was really my impression that the ordinances were outdated and written probably from a long time ago when people had a little bit of a different impression of of how chickens would fit into the scheme of kind of all of the pets. And so I'm glad that this is being considered because I think it is time to update these and really to think of chickens just like other pets and and other animals that are allowed and and that there really isn't any significant difference between the these same kinds of issues that happen with all kinds of other animals that are allowed to be kept. In addition, I wanted to just briefly touch on one of the articles that was referenced in one of the letters that you received and that was from the American Veterinary Medical Association. And so it cited some negative aspects, but I just wanted to read really quickly some of the other parts of that same article. From Baltimore to Los Angeles, Austin, Seattle, chicken ownership has become the rage in urban and suburban centers. Many owners keep chickens primarily for their eggs, but others develop strong human-chicken bonds and view and care for them as pets. Why do those in cities and burbs keep the chickens? There's a number of possibilities, including chickens are likable, eggs are nutrition, nutritious and versatile food, they desire to have more control over the food they eat, they're part of the local vor movement for eating food produced close to home, and or they say self-sufficiency is a safeguard against difficult economic times. So again, some of the same things you've been hearing, but I just wanted to reiterate that that again, is in the veterinarian's role is really to just make sure that the safety of the humans as well as the animals is being taken into consideration. And in the planning commission, I think what you're doing to develop a balanced approach that kind of takes into consideration of of all the residents. that kind of takes into consideration of, of all the residents, keep the quality of life, protect the health and safety of residents, as well as the welfare of the animals, and I'd urge you to move this forward to the City Council, and yeah, I think you have some well-thought-out amendments, and I'd like to see it moved forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, I have a question. Could I ask you a question, please?
Sure.
Thank you. One of the public comments that we received, that's in our packet, said something about that hens only lay eggs for about two years. Is that correct?
Well, it is somewhat variable, but the, the, you know, chickens laying has, there's a lot of factors. Some of that is even related to the light that they get, so a, a chicken would normally only lay eggs if they were, say, out at a park, and they weren't in a coop, for actually only part of the year, just like other birds will lay eggs during the spring when they're nesting. But you can have them lay eggs throughout the year by putting light on them, so that you kind of trick them into thinking that it's the spring and the summer months. And then, in terms of the length of time that they'll lay, that can be pretty variable, so they can still, they typically aren't going to lay an egg every single day as they get older, but it, that can be variable. In the chicken industry, they don't keep chickens very long to lay eggs, because they want the maximum production, but in a backyard situation, that would be very different.
And then, the regulations as written say that you can't slaughter a chicken. I guess you can't slaughter a chicken, you can slaughter a chicken in your house, I suppose, that's how it's written, right? Right? You can slaughter a chicken in your house?
No, it's not allowed slaughtering.
Correct. Okay. So, I mean, do, I mean, do, if you had an old chicken, do you take it to your vet to be euthanized? Is that typical?
That's, that's common, yes.
Okay. So that's, that's typically what happens, not?
Yeah, I think that you're talking again about different, the folks who really have their chickens as pets are typically not going to be considering slaughtering them under any circumstances, and are in fact, you know, seeking treatment when they're ill, or if they're nearing the end of their life. Other folks that are looking at it more as a food source, that may be part of, of what they are doing, but again, they would be subject to the ordinances, so.
Okay. And then I have one last question of you, and that's about, also again, a public letter we received, about salmonella. Can you, I'd like to explain, do people who keep chickens, and I know there's salmonella related to chickens, could you explain about what that's about?
Sure. And, and again, I'm going to give the, the caveat that I don't want to be, you know, standing as I'm up, as if I'm a public health expert. However, what I will share is that, you know, a lot of what goes on with salmonella is a, is a more widespread issue, and, and chickens are certainly not the only animal. There's plenty of other animals that, that can have that and cause exposure to families. It really comes more from the food production industry, and to be perfectly honest, from a personal point of view, I would be much more comfortable with an egg from a backyard chicken than I would be from an egg from a commercial facility, because a lot of the problem comes from the commercial facilities and the, the conditions, and the antibiotic use and things like that. So while I wouldn't say that it's nonexistent, I think, again, from my point of view, chickens don't present any more of a challenge than other types of animals that are already allowed to be kept in, as pets.
I have a question, if I may. Chairwoman, I'm just really curious, I don't think we've heard in any of the testimony in December now, how long does a chicken live? I mean, what's their life expectancy?
They can, they can live up into eight, ten, twelve years potentially, if they're, if they're kept really well, but again, I think it's the kind of thing where, in the poultry industry, they don't, they don't have those lifespans because of the way they're kept, but if they're kept as a pet, they can certainly have a longer lifespan, and again, that's where, you know, people do get attached to them and have them for a number of years, and, and they're not looking at them as only that source of food, they're looking at them as, you know, other, other birds or other pets that they might have.
Okay, thank you.
Are we done? Stephen Bennett, followed by Linda Bennett. At least, I think it's Stephen.
Yes.
Please state your name and city.
Steve Bennett, Dana Point. We were the contiguous neighbors to some people that had chickens, and frankly, I was unaware that they even had them. We had no noise issues, no sound issues, they were much less intrusive than, you know, typical domesticated animals like dogs, and, you know, we have cats that come into our yard and other things. So I was frankly unaware that he even had them, you know, until they told us that they had them. So they were no issue for us at all, and we're probably forty to forty-five feet from where they were kept, and had absolutely no issues at all. And my understanding is that Laguna Niguel also allows chickens as another similar community to ours, but like I said, we had no issues at all, was not even aware that they were there, have no intention to have chickens ourselves, I have no desire to have chickens, but we were unaware that they were even in close proximity to us. Thanks.
Thank you. Linda Bennett, followed by Ann Worthington.
Hi, Rhonda Bennett, Dana Point, and I am a neighbor right below the Perrines, and probably the only neighbor that would really be affected by the chickens. And I never once heard them, and there was no smell at all from these chickens, and I am just really strongly in favor of them having them. They were in a beautiful kept coop, and it's John's passion that he kept them, you know, clean and, and well taken care of, and I just strongly, strongly agree that you pass this, because I think it would be great. And the wave of the future, more and more people are more conscious of how they take care of themselves, so nothing's better than fresh eggs, and I just really, really strongly agree with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Worthington, followed by John Perrine.
Hi, Ann Worthington, Capo Beach, and I'm here to question why you would want to change the city code to allow residents to keep chickens in their yard. I believe the identity of our city is its beautiful coastline and clean beaches, harbor, blossoming town center, many comfortable residential neighborhoods, all of these features are wonderful together, and chickens just don't belong in that picture. I think if you polled residents about the issue, you'd really have to ask them the right questions, because it's not whether you like chickens or like animals, they, they're cute, but the question is, do you want to live right next door to chickens and hear them clucking and squawking at all hours? And are you prepared to deal with an increase in pests and vermin that are attracted by the chicken feed? Because that's what you'll have to deal with if chickens are allowed in our backyards. So one of the goals, I think, of the city's general plan and local coastal program is to consider the impacts on surrounding land uses when you're reviewing all the proposals for development. This amendment to the zoning code falls under that umbrella, because having live farm animals in the yard next door will have an impact on a neighbor's use. Most immediate, I think, would be a destruction of my quiet use and enjoyment, being outside in my backyard, having to listen to chickens. I don't know what other impacts would await residents, but I'm not sure we want to find out. And is the city prepared to work with CASA, issue permits, police the results when residents complain? My neighbor's coop is too close, someone's yard is filthy, there's a rooster next door. And then, of course, animal control must deal with caring for those inevitably lost and abandoned birds. I don't think it's wise for the city to dedicate its resources to policing chickens in our densely populated suburban area. Changing the zoning to allow chickens will change the character of our neighborhoods, and not for the better. Briefly, the general plan also addresses the noise element with the goal of protecting residents from excessive noise. Our homes don't have air conditioning, most people open their windows for cool air, and chickens make noise, and although it may not rise to the level of a train horn or the freeway, that constant clucking and squawking in the mornings, when they're stressed, cooped up, in effect, becomes excessive. So I enjoy my quiet neighborhood with high property values, values, and I would appreciate it if you made a motion not to recommend the approval of these amendments to the zoning code. The current policy is a good one. Thank you.
Thank you. John Perrine, I think, and followed by Carlin Nelson.
John Perrine, thirty-nine-year resident Dana Point. The staff came up with some factual information, unbiased information, on December eighth, referring to noise and odors primarily, as indicated in the negative declaration, attachment number two H on page two, was primarily focusing on the odor and the potential nuisance of noise from chickens. Going back and forth, I know with one and the other up here, and it's a tough decision for you guys to think, what's real here? One person's coming up, there are no noise, in other words per se, there are noise. So, but one tangible is what the, the information that came before you from the staff. They even broke it down to the decibel amount from two adults talking compared to the noise of chickens, and it being comparable in the backyard, when during the day they might be laying an egg is when you might hear that noise, not walking around squawking all day, and by the way, they are not even out at night and make zero noise when it's dark. So it's, it's, we might have to just look, I mean, if I'm in your seat and I'm thinking, well, the only thing I have that's real is what the staff provided with their scientific research and information that they went by. The facts that they provided indicated the decibel levels, et cetera, I talked about that. During, chickens are carried on, very brief conversations, of course, when only they lay an egg, you might hear something. The report and the recommendations from the staff are reasonable and unbiased, but now we're possibly looking at restrictions that might prohibit a significant majority of residents the opportunity for a productive, quiet pet. The increased setback plus the five-foot fence setback is somewhat extreme, considering they don't make noise, they sleep all night long, there's no odors, yet we have really in place setbacks that I think are extreme. If you have a fifteen thousand square foot lot or five acres, you could potentially still have a coop twenty feet away from a home or a resident. The setback with the research they did indicates that makes more sense. I've had chickens in the past, and neighbors directly involved or, and close to the coop would never complained, enjoyed coming over to see them, brought their kids over, even standing next to, a few feet away from the coop, couldn't smell anything, didn't hear anything. This is why I feel strongly allowing the residents of Dana Point to become a little more sustainable by raising chickens for eggs, even though it's a little bit, not going to be, it's not a farm, we're not, turning into that. Sixty percent of the residents in Dana Point have fruit trees, have herbs, have all kinds of things they're trying to do on their own, because they can control that. So, and with these restrictions, they could lose their chickens. I'm not carrying a videnna, I have no grudge, I love my neighbors, thank them for being here, there's a lot of them here, I want to thank them for coming and supporting chickens in us, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Carlin Nelson, followed by Gressel Wedle.
My name is Carlin Nelson, I live in Dana Point. I'm going to throw out some of this and try to address some of the anecdotal commentary you've heard. I'm one of those lucky people who live in a gated community, and we don't allow chickens, and I hope that the city maintains that status quo now. Right now, city ordinance six point fourteen zero zero two addresses public nuisances regarding noise, sanitation, and unsightliness. Our house backs up to a home that illegally kept chickens, and trust me, there is noise. There's not simply noise from chickens, but there's noise from the dogs that bark at the coyotes, and at the possum, and at the rats that come to eat the chickens' food, and even try to get at the chickens. And to address your question, Ms. Whitaker, about the dead chickens, actually title ten point twelve point ten addresses here in the city of Dana Point what we do with dead animals. So my question is, when a chicken dies, will the general manager have to come out and take the chicken away? Because that's what our law says now. I don't think you can ignore the CDC or the World Health Organization that addresses the concept of avian influenza. Right now, that's currently circulating in poultry in parts of Asia and northeast Africa that have caused human disease and even deaths. Yeah, it hasn't come to Dana Point, but if we allow chickens, maybe it will. Consider that there are, there are at least four concepts here: predators, public health, public nuisance, and the impact, certainly you've heard this already, on home values. Now, in a court of law, one of the concepts that plays largely is the concept of reasonable doubt. If you have any reasonable doubt, you have to not approve this ordinance. Thank you.
Gressel Wedle, followed by Henry Simea.
Hi, my name is Gressel Wedle, and I've been a Dana Point resident for the last fifteen years. Just wanted to say that I lived in Puerto Rico for ten years. My neighbor directly across the street from me, and the one directly behind me, and we're talking about tropical island, small homes, very close together, they both had chickens, and we never had an issue with them. I currently have a neighbor who had chickens, who no longer has them, but I live directly across from him as well, and I never heard them nor smelled them until he told me himself that he was keeping them. He loved these animals, these were his babies, they had names. They have a beautiful coop, very well maintained, they were fed, our kids enjoyed them, the kids in the neighborhood all got to know the chickens, and he can tell you what kind of hen it was, very proud. So it was very sad to see him lose his chickens. And I will say that I have a dog, and I'm a huge dog lover, but we all know, those that have dogs, that dogs can be very noisy. And like I said, we couldn't hear the chickens, we couldn't smell them, so I don't see why we have to deprive someone of something that brings them so much joy in, in their home if it's not affecting anybody else around them. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Henry Simea, followed by Nancy Rohr.
My name is Henry Simea, I live in Dana Point, California, Priscilla Drive. I'm not, I wasn't prepared for this, my wife dragged me here, but I'm just going to be honest with you. You can't tell me chickens don't make noise, because I heard them make noise. My neighbor had them in the morning, five o'clock in the morning, you hear noise. And somebody that says they, they don't make noise is not true. And it's just, I don't want to wake up in the morning at five o'clock and hear chickens. I'm a city person, a lot of these people were brought up on a country farm or whatever, I know they like it. You can't, you can't fight City Hall, it's Democrats and Republicans, but I just, I'm totally against it, and the smell, you know, if the wind's blowing the right way, twenty-five feet, I'm a golfer, twenty-five foot putt, you, I'll put six chickens next to your house on a Sunday when you're entertaining in your backyard. That's what you got to think about, who was ever voting on this. You have to listen to me, listen to them, it's all baloney, because every, it's fifty-fifty. Put the chickens twenty-five feet from your door on a Sunday when you're entertaining your friends, and think about it. That's all I can say. You, because you, who's voting on this? You people are going to vote on? You, all you people are going to vote on this, so it's you, not them. One says they don't smell, one says they smell, one says they don't make noise, one says, you know, it's back and forth, it's up to you. You have to put yourself and say, that chicken's twenty-five feet from my kitchen, and I'm entertaining today. You know, if you're a farm person, they love it. My, my neighbors are here, they love the chickens, and I love my neighbors. I just don't want them. I, I, I'm not a farm person, I don't want to be awakened at five o'clock in the morning, we sleep with our windows open for thirty-five years on that street, and I don't want to hear gobble, 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 and at ten o'clock, the same thing, and at five o'clock. And that's, I don't know what else I could say, but you're the ones, put the chickens twenty-five feet from your door. Even these other cities, eighteen thousand square feet or whatever, big lots, half acre, these lots right over there are small, the fence is here, the next house is here, the lots are very small where we live, in, in the Bible Belt. And who would want that? I'm not against the chickens, I like chicken wings, but put the chickens twenty-five feet from your door, and that's what you got to vote.
Thank you. Nancy Rohr, followed by Carolyn Perrine.
Nancy Rohr, a resident of Capistrano Beach. I, my backyard and my home back up to the warring chicken factions, okay? And I'd like to address Mr. Chad George's assumption about how many chickens and how many homes are going to have, fifty chickens. We have our signs up in support of Mrs. Wigley, not that we want chickens, I don't, you know, I've got two dogs, I don't want chickens, but it was in support because I experienced it firsthand. But I'd like a couple of things I'd like to go over. Under item ten thirteen ten, section six C, it references rodents and predators, which has been brought up. Rodents and predators are all over Dana Point, they live in underbrushed homes, they live in ravines, they live in Pines Park, that, a lot of them, I've seen them at night walking my dogs, live on that south side of Palisades School where the underbrush is really thick, and I've seen possums and rats running around. They, that, there are rats in trees, and they live in dead trees, and they live in ivy, and they really come after our fruits and vegetables. So, I mean, we're going to chop down our avocado trees and our citrus? No. And I can tell you that I have a vegetable garden and avocado trees, and I can relate that I have seen more possums and rodent activity in the last four or five months than any other time. The chickens have been gone for nine months, so that's not even relatable, it's not even part of the point in, in my experience. Any attraction to animals from rodents might be their food, just like dog and cat food, you have to, and, and bird food, you must keep it secured and indoors. As for home values, there's a home next door to me for sale. People have been sitting on it like mad, I've been out in the front yard weeding a lot, I must have spoken to at least twenty people who saw my sign and said, oh, you have chickens? I said, no, potential buyers, they're, they said, how cool is that? Most of them, they were really excited. And then, you'd think it would affect the home value, well, now the bidding war has started, and it's eighty thousand more than the starting listing price, so it hasn't affected that home's value at all. As for those who have experienced chickens in the rural areas, and they think it won't work here, for four months, I was the closest neighbor to Mrs. Wigley's chicken coop, she moved it towards mine with my permission. I never heard them in the morning, I'm a late sleeper, I would hear them between like nine and noon, and it was pleasant. I just want you to know, I never had, my bedroom was thirty-five feet away, I never had a, a concern, a complaint about noise or any other thing, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Carolyn Perini, followed by Dale Watson.
Hi, thank you for this opportunity. My name's Carolyn Perini from Dana Point, I've been a resident for thirty-nine years, and I don't think there's anything left to address that I haven't already heard, except that I would like to add one comment, and that is, when I hear about fads and salmonella, all of those things, so I'd like to make a few comments about that. Number one, the reason this is not a fad is because there, this is, this is actually a trend, which is part of a growing movement, based on the fact that our food supply is not the same as what it used to be. There's a lot of adulterations, but one of them in particular is the rise in foodborne illness. So, what motivates some people to get chickens, or to have fruit trees, or to grow organic gardens or herb gardens, is the fact that it is hard to trust because of the fact that there's so much foodborne illness, that you're really getting safe food anymore. That is driving this more than fadness. The other thing I want to address is salmonella. Being a microbiologist my whole life, where salmonella gets associated with chickens is due to the factory farming. Those chickens are treated inhumanely, to the point where California is now addressing that, and these chickens are allowed to lay eggs where they defecate. So, salmonella has become a worldwide problem based on industrialization of food manufacturing and food processing, and also the way we raise animals and their products today. So, just in defense of, in fact, it's the opposite, when, the fact that you have your own chickens, you control and give them a steady, healthy diet, you make sure that their environment is clean, and that these chickens are, they're happy, they're not stressed out, they don't get medications, tons of hormones. I believe that, and being part of this in my field that I'm in, that a lot of the foodborne allergies and sensitivities we have today are related to this industrialization of the food supply. So, this is why, and helps explain, why people desperately want to be able to raise at least one important food by themselves, because they can control some of the factors, that being healthy eggs, which is considered a staple in the American diet, and the health of that egg is totally dependent on the health of a chicken. So, although we don't get to choose all of our food supply when we're restricted to city living, I would say that there are things that we can do, such as having a few chickens to get a few healthy eggs that we have complete control over, is something that I am totally interested, as a nutrition, as a microbiologist who worked at St. Joe's Hospital for twenty years with these infections, and let me just add, avian and different types of flu actually originate because of the poor animal conditions that we use in industrial factory farming. So, there are thirty new, new types of pathogens. Thank you very much, I'm in favor of chickens.
Thank you. Dale Watson, followed by, it looks like Sharon, I can't read the last name, Skidden? Don't know. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Dale Watson, I live in San Clemente. I have a master's degree in environmental engineering, I grew up in Montana, so I'm well familiar with chickens and farming, but what I'd really like to talk about tonight is tax money, something near and dear to the heart of the city. One of the things that happens when you enact a new ordinance, it's not for the conscientious owner of chickens, it's for the majority of the rest of them that just have chickens, and one of the problems with chickens is feces, and concentrated feces particularly underneath their coops. What happens with that when the stormwater comes and it rains? Are we going to enact BMPs for each coop? Who's going to go out and check it? The city already has issues with fecal coliform in the stormwater, it affects our beaches, it affects our tourism. What's going to happen when we have a hundred, or as one of our speakers talked about tonight, a significant majority of residents having chickens? Now all of a sudden, we're going to have to deal with all of the feces from these chickens concentrated, it's different from other pets because it's smaller, it's easily picked up by rainwater, therefore it's transferred into the storm drain system, the city is then responsible for it under the MS four permit. Who's going to clean that up? Who's going to inspect that? So, we have a, a big problem here in, in South Orange County with our beaches constantly being rated low on the scale of swimability and being able to go out, particularly when it rains, so I think this is going to be a significant problem. Also, I've worked in the development industry for twenty-five years. You need to have a large lot to have chickens, it's just a typical zoning ordinance. You know, you can't have non-domesticated animals in an area where you have lots that are just smaller than, you know, as we've heard, fifteen thousand square feet, it just doesn't work. It just opens the door to adding more and more types of animals. And so, I think that as we move forward, we need to think about not just a single owner, but the majority of potential chicken owners in, in the city. And, you know, if you go, one of the, one of the other comments was, well, go to this farm, or go to this other area and look at the chickens, see how well they're kept, see how well, you know, they're taken care of and are loved, but they also have requirements there for BMPs, significant BMPs, which protect the stormwater, which treat the waste. Who's going to monitor how the waste is disposed of? Are they going to throw it in the trash? Is every owner going to throw it in the trash? Or are they just going to sweep it out, or, or hose it down with a hose? So, I think that's a significant problem. And then, it puts a, a big onus on the inspectors. When they go out, are they going to inspect the health of the chickens? Are they going to inspect the drainage? Are they going to inspect where the coop is? Does it have a roof? All those different kinds of things. So, I just think it opens up a, a big Pandora's box of problems if we're going to change the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's Sharon Skilton, maybe that's what it is, and then Alex Martinez.
Hi, I'm Sharon Skilton, resident of Dana Point, and when I first heard about the issue of chickens, I was in favor of it, I responded positively to the idea. I like the idea of knowing our food source, knowing where it comes from, and being able to be a little bit self-sustaining, we do have fruit trees in our yard, and when I go to the store to buy chicken, to buy eggs, I usually pay the price for free-range chickens because I object to, ethically, to the way chickens are raised and eggs are produced commercially. So, the idea of having chickens appeals to me, and I understand that you have a very difficult decision to make, and your position is one that has to include all the residents, and I was looking forward to learning something when I came to the meeting tonight because I needed to find out what some of the objections were to the chickens, I didn't really know too much about why there would be any objection to having six to eight, I think, and I think in my particular case, my yard is probably not even going to permit them, after all, when I, when I think about the setback requirements and that kind of thing. So, I may not be able to have chickens even if it does pass, but I'm in favor of it for those reasons that first came to mind for me, and I appreciate the opportunity to just speak to you, and at least you can hear, hear one person's opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Martinez, followed by Nancy Wigley.
Good evening, I'm Alex Martinez, I am a resident of Capistrano Beach, lived here for eighteen years, and we've heard tonight, both, both sides of the story, basically, people who don't have a problem with chickens, people that have problems with chickens. I, I have one question, though, that I wanted to ask, is whether all the environmental and personal impact issues of such an endeavor have been actually investigated. Quoting information off the internet from chicken rescue or farm sanctuaries that take chickens when they stop producing eggs, quote, "Chickens attract flies, bird mites and lice, yard birds, squirrels, raccoons, dogs, coyotes, foxes, mink, opossum, rats, owls, bobcats, hawks, snakes, weasels, ferrets, et cetera," close quote. Is it not possible that chicken coops will attract some of these predators to residential areas, looking for food, and will result in an increase in the disappearance of domestic cats and small dogs? Are you willing to tell all residents they need to start keeping their pets inside simply because more of these predators are now hanging around the neighborhood, attracted by chickens kept in coops, but feeding on substitute sources of prey? And then, as was pointed out here a second ago, the, the, the issue of chicken excretion runoff into the storm drains, I live on the beach, so I know about the, the beach water quality issues that, that are affected by there. I'm the one that always turns in my neighbors for washing their cars and so forth, I know they should be going to the car wash. In my opinion, allowing this change in the ordinance is creating a totally subjective situation, pitting neighbor against neighbor that will be difficult to enforce, and as we've heard here today, what is noisy cackling to some is not bothersome to others. What is offensive stench to a few may not offend some, but does this make it any less of a real problem? Basically, you would be telling those who would have a problem with this, you know, quote unquote, get over it. And as we all know, many if not most homes in this area do not have air conditioner units, and rely on open windows to take advantage of prevailing ocean breezes to create a draft in their homes. So, are you prepared to tell these folks they have to keep their windows closed if they find the odors wafting from chicken coops next door offensive? I have to ask, where is the greater good here? It certainly isn't in appeasing those in the minority who desire to raise chickens. Sadly, if you continue down this path, you'll be joining the many legislators and governments who create laws by exception, and in the process, making our neighborhoods less neighborly, besides suppressing the value of our homes. With regards to this matter, I respectfully ask that you reconsider allowing these many poultry farms in our neighborhoods, and if you still insist on allowing this, at the very least, be consistent with our neighboring municipalities, San Clemente and San Juan Capistrano, to arrive at a consistent and workable arrangement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nancy Wigley. It's our last speaker, I think.
Good evening. Nancy Wigley, Capistrano Beach, and I'm sorry, I'm the one that has caused this whole boulder. I had a few things I wanted to speak to address tonight, but having listened to some of the things that have been said, I have to address them. I, we live in our, in our particular area, across the street from the bank of the Palisades School Playground. It is covered with bushes, et cetera, et cetera. Since day one, and I've been in my home since the seventies, rats and rodents and so forth live over there. They love to run across the street and run into our garages, if we have the garage door open, which neighbors on the street do. It's not a new problem, it certainly is not caused by the chickens that I had in the backyard. Enough on that. We cleaned our coop. When we cleaned the coop, we cleaned underneath the coop, around the coop, in the coop. The feces were very conveniently put in a compost container, which many people have and use for their gardens, and that container didn't even smell. Any more than if you just put leaves in it and let them rot. I know that for a fact because that's what we did with our, with, with the droppings. Another thing, I've been, I no longer, thank goodness, but was a real estate broker in this, in this area for thirty-seven years, I have never, ever had anybody complain, or even, I've had more people say, are we allowed to have chickens? Or are we allowed to have a dog? Or how many dogs? And, I've never, ever seen anything detrimental. Now, I'm not talking about fifty chickens, of course, that would be a problem, I'm talking about up to six. The last thing I want to mention is the economical factor has really changed. Since the law changed and all the chicken farmers are having to retrofit, I went to Costco the other day, and a flat of five dozen eggs, that was four weeks ago, seven dollars and ninety-nine cents, is now fifteen dollars and ninety-nine cents. And, it filters down, eighteen eggs, white eggs, four ninety-nine, they were two forty-nine. For somebody on a fixed budget as I am, that's another reason I'd like to have my chickens back, because we enjoy the healthy eggs, the lower cholesterol, and thank you so much for all the work you've done on this. I know it's not a fun thing to sit there and listen to all this, the city staff has done a supreme job in their research, and I really hope that you respect their research. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no more speaker slips, but Denise, do you have any more?
None.
Then that's it. Madam Chair? Do we, we have one more? All right. You'll, you're going to need to fill out a speaker slip when you're done, when you're done, not, not right now, but just say your name and city of residence.
Good afternoon, everybody, my name's Tom D. Simone, I live in Capistrano Beach. I had a lot of things written down here, but everybody here covered everything I wanted to say just about, but, my recommendation here is to, if you really want to do this, nothing personal to you guys, do not vote on it, bring it up in a general election, so everybody who lives in Capistrano Beach and Dana Point can vote on it. I don't think it's right for, for you guys to take this challenge upon yourself, okay? There isn't enough people here today to give a true representation. There's a lot of people around here who don't like it in Capistrano Beach, and none of the people that I spoke to are here tonight. So, I believe if it went up to a general election, I don't know when that is, I think it's two thousand sixteen or whatever it is, we've been out, we've been without chickens for forty years, we could do with another eighteen months without chickens. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right, now I think we're done.
All right, if there's nothing else, I'd like to bring this to deliberation.
Close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm closing the public hearing, we'll bring this to commissioner deliberation. I, I thought, as I listened to all of this, I thought that maybe a good way to look at this is to take a look at the two options which staff had, had, had recommended, and the two options, one is approval of the proposed ZTA one four dash. And the two options, one is approval of the proposed ZTA one four dash zero 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 one and LCP one four dash zero zero to approve the proposed ZTA one four zero 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 and LCP to allow poultry in all single-family residential districts or recommend its adoption and approval to the city council or make a motion not to recommend approval to the city. Make a motion to not recommend approval, sorry, I'm saying this twice, uh, council of the proposed ZTA one four zero 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 and LCP A one zero 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 one. Well, that's clear as mud. Who wants to start?
I have a question of staff. Could I ask some questions of staff? From the testimony before we go into deliberation?
I would seem so, yeah.
Is that okay?
It's part of deliberation.
Is it part of my deliberation?
As far as I'm concerned, somebody wants to say something else.
Go ahead, that's fine. I just have some questions that, that I, from the testimony, that I, before I make my consideration. Is that okay? So, one of the speakers raised a question about stormwater runoff and, um, best, uh, management, best management practices. And I noticed that the neg- negative deck says that for, um, in, uh, result increase in pollution discharge, you have no impact. Um, I think the, I don't know if, um, we already have impaired waters. I don't know if that, um, is impact, if that goes into effect. And then the potential for, um, impact to, uh, surface waters or marine waters. So, uh, my question is, um, I noticed we don't have any, um, anything that addresses stormwater discharge and I was just interested in your thoughts on that.
Well, I think from the staff's perspective, um, um, and part of our research was looking at this, um, article that was, it was a comprehensive survey done of a hundred most populated cities that had, uh, poultry, um, urban areas. And, um, to the great extent, um, the number of, of chickens, um, or permits per se or use of chickens in a residential zone is not considered kind of an inordinate amount. You're not going to have large quantities, um, likely. So the impacts associated with water quality and that were not viewed as potentially significant. Um, they were checked as no impact, um, kind of on that basis. So, these aren't, um, chicken farms, these aren't large areas where there would be, um, an incredible or a high quantity amount of feces or that type of thing. I'm not a water quality expert, um, per se, but that was the genesis of kind of the thought behind why the staff, uh, looked at hydrology in that particular manner.
I noticed that when, um, someone comes in to add, um, one, uh, one foot of roof, we, we put, we have a condition that they have to comply with best management practices. Um, is there, would there be a problem adding a best management practices for stormwater runoff? I, I would, I would think that, um, um, there should be something, uh, to keep this from, uh, going into, um, our stormwater system.
If I may, Erica, I think that one thing we heard, um, and I guess it's anecdotal, so, I, I, but somebody mentioned when they clean, that they clean the coop and they, you know, they dispose of the droppings one way or another. I would suppose that would be either in the trash or composting, which I've heard frequently. People who are interested in raising chickens, um, often are somewhat more cognizant of the environment and whatnot. Um, and, and actually, I, I hear it's valuable, um, uh, the chicken droppings are valuable, um, fertilizer for a number of, of types of plantings. But we do have the condition that they have to keep the coop clean. So I think that condition is, in a way, managing that particular issue. And I think we'd have to look at, um, whether there's an, I mean, these coops are not going to be large structure, so in terms of the area of roof that would be added by a coop, we would need to look into see whether that is exempt or not for stormwater best practices. Um, I, I would suspect that it is, but I don't know that for certain. And I think we would like to be able to do that research before we would require, it would be a pretty onerous requirement, I think, to put on if it is, you know, in fact exempt. Um, and so I would just propose that we would like the ability to look into that.
I guess if I can continue, I don't mean to go first, but I guess I did. I'm sorry to say that. But, um, the other, um, when I looked at, um, page nineteen of the staff report, um, or maybe it's the resolution, or I guess it's page nineteen of the, um, changed ordinances. Yeah. So it's the, um, Residential Animal Permit ten thirteen ten, page nineteen. And it lists, um, under six, A through F, residential animal permit shall be revoked. Um, I was, um, one of the things that the permit requires is a site plan, but, um, uh, I would, I would think that should be a grounds for revoking if they're not consistent with their approved site plan.
I, I'm sorry, can you say that? I missed what you said, that...
Okay. We require under the permit a site plan.
Mm-hmm.
But it's not a condition to revoke the permit if they're not in compliance with their site plan. So I would, I would think that in A, um, compliance with the site plan that's approved would be part of that.
If I could propose, I know, um, Norm had some comments along those same lines earlier. Maybe we put in a general catch-all, any other violation of the provisions of this chapter or this section, and I think that will encompass all the potential violations that are out there and provide if it's amended later down the line, we still encompass everything. I think that'll probably, uh, catch everybody's concerns.
Um, just as long as it, just, everybody's site plan's going to be a little different and it wouldn't necessarily be, um, meaning they could be in compliance with the setbacks, but not in compliance with their site plan.
Certainly.
That's why I raised that. And then...
Can I just ask a question? So you're looking for consistency?
Yeah, consistency.
That's nice.
Okay. Um, and then the other thing I, I was going to, um, ask about is that when we're talking, it always seems like we're talking about the setback being thirty-five feet away from the dwelling. But that's, that's not what the, what it says. It says, um, thirty-five feet from door or window. So if they don't have a door or a window, it could be five feet away, whatever the setback is, from the fence. And so I, I, I just wanted to get, you know, I understand that's, that's what it says. But in my mind, and when I hear people talking, they, they think it's thirty-five feet from the dwelling. But that's not what it is. And I, I guess, um, in, the way I look at it, when I heard that they wanted thirty-five feet, I, I thought it was from the dwelling. So, um, I would take outdoor or window and just keep it as dwelling. Um, so that's, those are my questions and, um, if, do you want me to go ahead with my thoughts on this? Or do you want, or do other people have questions?
I have a couple of other quick questions. For Erica, the... Erica, you did a s- a survey of how many cities for this?
Um, uh, I believe it was twenty, twenty-one.
So was the number six kind of the number that surfaced most often in these cities as far as...
Generally, yeah. Generally, it was like six to eight.
Okay.
Um, some cities varied, but it was mostly an even number.
So our proposal's on the lower side of what you would say the average is?
Yes.
Okay. And this is probably data you don't have. What percentage in these cities of, you know, of residents actually have chickens?
Um, that I don't have. Um, I know that of the, the three cities that I did, um, go back and kind of inquire with that had permits in place, Newport Beach, Huntington Beach, and San Marino, neither Huntington Beach nor Newport had issued any permits specifically for poultry. Um, San Marino was the one city that had a permit process in place that had gone through and issued permits and, uh, done the inspections, um, et cetera.
Okay. Probably safe to say that a lot more people own dogs and cats.
Probably, yes. Yeah.
Thanks.
First chair.
I d- I don't have any questions. I was just going to, you know, begin my deliberation if that's all right with you?
It's fine.
All right. Uh, s- some of you that came to the last meeting probably, you know, have already heard me say this, but I'll say it again. You know, I grew up in Riverside and, um, you know, I, I rode horses, I raised bunnies, you know, we had a, grew apricots and, you know. Um, until this day, I still love the smell of, uh, cows and wet hay in the morning. So I am, you know, I, I grew up in an agricultural community and I understand, you know, the certain needs of, of people and what they like about that kind of lifestyle. Nevertheless, um, I am opposed to this amendment, this own text amendment, uh, for several reasons. And, and one of the, well, there are so many, but, um, first of all, this whole issue with enforcement and CASA, they have, um, no plans for funding. They don't have, their people that they send out, um, their officers or whatever you want to call them, um, they're not chicken experts. So if, you know, something is wrong with the chicken or, um, or with the way they're being housed, um, these officers won't really know what to look for. Um, I'm af- I'm worried that because they don't have any kind of permit process for poultry, um, right now, or any enforcement that, or any funding that, that, you know, the other taxpayers, whether it's, you know, dog and cat licensing fees somewhere, the money's got to come from somewhere to, um, even begin drafting these, you know, forms and, and permits and, and the whole process. So, um, so I think that is a, a big failure with what we're looking at right now. Um, chickens, you know, I, I know people like them as pets and everything, but they are not, um, they're not like dogs and cats. Dogs and cats are considered clean animals. That is, they don't defecate where they sleep or eat or have their water or go to bed. But, um, bunnies and chickens and things like that, they are considered dirty animals because they just go wherever and they eat in the same area. So, um, I, you know, I don't think that, I, I, obviously, there are very responsible dog and cat owners and, and then we've all have one neighbor in a neighborhood who is just horrible with their dogs, you know, barking all the time. And I feel the same way about, you know, people who want chickens. There are, probably mostly, most of them are good owners and are responsible, but you're going to have those people that aren't good, uh, caretakers of their chickens. And then it gets back to, well, what do you do when that happens? And CASA, right now, is not, you know, ready to implement, um, enforcement. But the other thing that, I mean, I, there's been quite a bit of debate over, is the chicken noisy or not? And, you, you know, it just really kind of depends on the quality of your hearing and, uh, and where it is, where the sound is coming from. But, um, you know, I don't know if you were over in, uh, Kauai, on the island of Kauai after Hurricane Aniki and all the chickens came loose and roosters and everything. So wherever you went, there were chickens, you know, doing their little cluck, cluck, yeah. Which was, um, I don't think we have to worry about that here in Dana Point, that we're going to have a hurricane that's going to unleash all the chickens. But, you know, I think you pretty much know the, the sound level. But, you know, do you want that next to you when in, on a five thousand square foot lot or a five foot setback, uh, ten feet total? Uh, I think most people would say no. And the other huge element of this is, you know, feces. It smells. I mean, it is a pneumonia-based, uh, excrement and it's not pleasant. And if it's not, you know, properly contained or taken care of or disposed of, whether, even if you put it in, um, a compost thing, it can be quite rancid and it's not something you want to have, you know, ten feet or thirty-five feet away from your home. And you get a nice ocean breeze in Dana Point and guess what? It is coming over to your barbecue, uh, dinner with friends or, you know, it, that, that is something we have to consider. Um, people go on vacation, they don't clean up. Um, and, and hey, I'm a dog owner too and I know people that don't clean up after their dogs. Um, but that's going to happen with chickens as well. Um, there's an issue of predators and flies. Flies, I was just talking about barbecuing, so, uh, that was one of the things I was thinking of. But, you know, we had an apricot tree when I was growing up. I'll tell you, we had, you know, all sorts of vermin running up and down that, that tree, getting to the, the food source. But, um, you know, there, there will be an increase in vermin and it's not just, you know, it's predatory birds, it's, you know, um, coyotes or little bobcat, bobtail things, you know, that, we had one in my old neighborhood that was making its way around the, the, um, homes. And, um, so that's something we, you know, I'm not too happy about. Obviously, in an agricultural area where there's more space, it, there's more space for the vermin too, but you don't want that on a five thousand square foot lot or a ten thousand square foot lot. Um, what really, in addition to all that, what really bothers me about this, uh, zone text amendment is that all these other communities, Newport Beach, you know, we're talking a half an acre, it's residential agricultural zoning. I mean, we're just saying, oh, thirty-five feet and residential one, single family. I mean, that's, Newport Beach doesn't do it that way. We shouldn't be doing it that way. Um, Laguna Niguel, fifteen thousand square feet. Laguna Hills, fifteen thousand square feet. Um, San Juan, two and a half acres, you know, and residential agricultural zone. Um, now, you can get a C, a CUP to raise chickens in San Juan, but you got to pay eight thousand dollar deposit to do it. So guess what? They're not doing it. Uh, so I'm, I mean, I am not in favor of, of approving this. My, my, uh, what, what, my, my vote is going to be for the, uh, latter of the, um, you know, our choices here, which was...
Second motion.
The, the second motion, which is not to approve.
Well, you go ahead.
I just spoke, I want to, I, I want to hear what you have to say.
Oh, I got it.
Okay.
Well, um, I want to keep something, uh, you know, at the forefront here is that the commission was asked to, to take a look at this, uh, proposal by, um, the city council and, and residents that wanted to see the possibility of a change. And so I want to commend Erica and staff for the fact that they've done an enormous amount of research over the last couple of months. And so we're not dealing with just an emotional issue of chickens, feces, and all the other things that we're talking about here. Um, we're, we're, we're tonight trying to put together a recommendation to the city council. And the city council is elected by the people. The city council has the authority to do what they would like... The city council has the authority to do what they would like to do with this, whether it's calling for a general election, putting this on the ballot. They can do those types of things. The commission here tonight, our job, as I saw it, was, is to craft an either thumbs up or thumbs down recommendation to the city council. And the city council can then, whether we say thumbs down, they can still go ahead and hear this issue and take a look at it or not. And so I guess I'm coming at it with, this was a tough decision for us to gather all this data, but it's not a done deal whether we say yea or nay. It's really going to be something that the city council has to make that ultimate decision on how they're going to approach this. I think what we heard tonight is that the residents are pretty well evenly divided between the issue. And, you know, the concerns about water quality, I've spent a fair amount of time looking into the water quality in my past and I can tell you that upstream from San Juan Creek, where people don't curb their dogs, don't pick up the dog mess and it goes into the storm drains and comes down the San Juan River Creek bed or even people walking their dogs on my street outside by the sewer and, you know, do not pick up the mess. It goes into the gutter, into the storm drain and it's into the river. Whereas I would assume what I heard from somebody here that had chickens is that they gather up the chicken feces and they put it into a composter or they would put it into some sort of garbage bag, plastic garbage bag, I would assume, and put it into the garbage that, you know, is picked up on a weekly basis. I don't anticipate that they would be dumping it in any sewer or taking a hose, which hosing driveways and things of that nature is now illegal in Dana Point anyway, and trying to hose the chicken stuff down into the storm drain out into the river. So I'm not so concerned about it adding a burden to the water quality that we face every year when the rain season comes and washes the San Juan Creek into the Doheny Beach area. I, as I said, I think the, I think the amendments that were put together since the first hearing that we had in December, 35 feet, I would feel much more comfortable that it does not say 35 feet from a window or door, that it would say 35 feet from the fence line is something that I feel more comfortable with. But that's, that's just a fine tuning, I think, of this and I'd be happy to hear what my fellow commissioners have to say about that. I, I don't think chickens in an urban environment is the best place for them, but that being said, I've heard so many positive comments tonight that I don't know that I'm qualified to make that, to make that decision. So sometimes the tough decisions get to be made by the elected officials that we all voted for. And we're appointed in this position and we have to bring the best possible information, I think, to the city council. And that being said, I think Erica and the staff has done a wonderful job of doing the research. So I'd like to hear what the rest of the commissioners have to say.
What Commissioner Denton says is pretty much spot on. You know, we're charged with not a final decision and I've been moving this forward to be worked, worked out, adjusted, potentially either approved or disapproved based on, you know, everything we decide or we vote on can always be overturned by the, by a higher body, the council in this instance. I'm not a chicken expert, but for some reason or other, I've spent a lot of years around chickens. We've been in town 18 years. For the first 10, my neighbor behind owned chickens. I didn't know you couldn't have them. And, you know, I'll be honest with you. When he had a rooster, I knew who was there in the morning. And he had, they had maybe, I don't know, six, eight hens. You'd hear them a little bit in the morning when they were laying eggs and then they'd settle down. Everybody that had a dog was a lot noisier, including mine, was noisier than the chickens. My dog was never roused by the chickens nor were my neighbors. You know, there tends to be other dogs or other things happening. My grandfather had an orange grove, had a lot of chickens, you know, they were not filthy animals. They didn't go to the bathroom where they ate. If they were free range, they would go to the appropriate place. When they're in a coop, you fall under the assumption of responsible ownership. A coop that allows the living quarter to be clean and the surrounding area to be cleaned up by the owners to eliminate those problems of buildup of fecal matter, either to be washed downstream in those rare instances where we get rain or by just accumulation. Vermin, since they got rid of their, I don't, you know, coincidental, it's timing, whatever. There's a lot more skunks and things around our house since they have not had them and I don't attribute it to them either being there or not, they just kind of come and go. We have skunk years, we have non-skunk years. We have opossum that show up and we have opossum that disappear. And unfortunately, we have cats that get eaten. That's just a fact of life around here. We have enough green belts, it coyotes and prey animals come in and find those things that are left out at night unwittingly. You know, I think this, the work the staff has done is appropriate. I don't really see a reason why people that are responsible with the framework that's been structured for permitting and review and appeal will not make this a workable situation. I can completely understand the want, the desire of some people to own it, but, you know, at the end of the day, I'm not going to own chickens. I mean, most people in town are not going to own chickens. We're not going to turn into New Zealand where there's more sheep than people. I'm pretty comfortable making that statement. So, you know, I'm comfortable, I think, you know, that this could be worked, you know, worked out, moved forward, some adjustments made, whether the 35 feet is from a structure, from a window. Staff has better input to that. I think what Erica did and the staff with the survey of the surrounding cities. I'm in agreement with Commissioner Denton. I think this could be moved forward to the council for final adjustments. And I understand the desire to do that. I mean, my neighbor, when they shared the eggs, they did taste better than the ones you buy. I'll move it forward from here.
Commissioner Whitaker.
My only experience with chickens in a suburban area was at my son's house. And his neighbor has three chickens in a coop. They're five feet off of the fence line, but probably 35 feet away from their house. Their lots are large, almost probably three-fourths of an acre. I didn't even know the chickens were there. And I, and so I'm not, I, you know, I, you know, when I first heard about this, I thought, oh, raising chickens, yeah, that'd be fun. You know, but then when you really get down to it, I can, I, you know, when you hear from the people that are against it and have those concerns. One thing that concerns me is the potential for conflict with neighbors. And that, you know, that concerns me about this. That people would be in conflict and two people talking, two people that annoy you talking is, you know, not fun to listen to, whether it's chickens or just two people talking. I do think, I really agree that staff has done a great job presenting the information to us on this. And I'm, I'm comfortable moving this forward, but I would like to have a condition added to it about the cleanup. What, you know, meaning, you know, dogs and cats, they're, they're out of the bag. You know, you can't pass a law now that you have to pick up after your dog and you can't have a dog. I mean, that's, I mean, we have bags everywhere in town. People are constantly, you know, it's a big issue, water quality. But I think right now with introducing chickens, I think we should put something in about cleaning that up and where it should go and it doesn't, to prevent it from getting into the stormwater. So I think that needs to be added. And then I, I feel better with 35 feet away from a dwelling than 35 feet away from a window or door. Just, and that is really to address, try and address conflicts with the neighbors. So that's that's where I come down on it right now.
Thank you.
I agree with everybody, sort of, okay? How's that sound? It seems to me that what I saw today was most of the people that we heard from were from a particular neighborhood. And what that makes me think is perhaps, I certainly don't think that we're ready to move this forward this evening. But perhaps what we might do is use that neighborhood as a way to move us forward over a period of time because they seem, they seem to be more, more self-organized and unable to do it. For example, I certainly wouldn't use Beach Road as a place to make this happen. So I think that that particular neighborhood may be the one that we look to, to move this forward. In terms of doing anything specific tonight, I'm really not prepared to do that. But at the same time, I don't want to say, no, this is terrible and we should walk away from it. I think it's doable. I just think we even, we need to find the next step.
Madam Chair, you bring up an interesting point that would this be acceptable on Beach Road? Even if there was a 35-foot setback or whatever? No, of course not. Why? Because it's, it's, it's more suburban than agricultural. And that's why it's Zone R1 and not, you know, residential agricultural. 30,000 people or so live in Dana Point. And we all bought our homes or took, you know, our leasing apartments and condominiums and whatever. They all moved in thinking that they were never going to, or weren't supposed to have chickens as their neighbors. And now, all of a sudden, we're deciding, you know, to pass this on to city council so that they can approve, you know, chickens. And I think that's the wrong thing to do. I mean, I agree with you. Absolutely not on lots, you know, 5,000 square feet or 6,000, 10,000. Every one of our, you know, adjacent, or, you know, every one of our neighbors. Newport, Laguna Hills, Laguna Niguel, San Juan, even San Clemente. You know, well, I take that back, not San Clemente. They all have, you know, a half acre to 15,000 square foot lots. Why? Why is this commission allowing chickens in lots any smaller than 15,000 square feet? Why? When our neighboring communities aren't doing it? So, anyway, I'm just curious.
Can I ask, can I ask a question then? Would you be supportive to move the ordinance forward if 15,000 square foot minimum lot size was added to the ordinance?
I would say yes. And with the, and I don't know if it's in here or not, but with the an addition that if there is a homeowner association that disallows chicken coops or raising of chickens, that, that, that their rule stands and it isn't, it can't be, I don't know how to say that properly, maybe the city attorney can help me. That, you know, the HOA rule won't get subverted or whatever.
We could, like we do with the vacation rental permits, ask for proof that chickens aren't barred by HOA CCNRs.
That they are or they aren't? They are?
Proof that they are not banned.
Oh, okay, I see.
Right.
Right, okay. And then, oh, and then we have the enforcement issue. How are we going to get around CASA? Or, I mean, I'm not sure how to, how to move the enforcement aspect of this.
Can I ask Kim with CASA to come up again? And maybe, Kim, if you can describe what process CASA has to take to add a new fee? Because I think it was envisioned that CASA would create a fee, a permit fee associated with this, so that it would be a fee for service, just like any other fee you have. What's the, I mean, and could you just use your existing kennel fee? Or would you need to create a new poultry fee? Or can you describe how that process works with CASA, please?
Again, I'm not quite sure how much impact this will have on the officer's time because this is new to us. But depending on the inspections and if it is bi-monthly, the fee would more than likely be over and beyond the $80 permit fee that's currently in place for a kennel permit. And that's an annual fee and that's a annual inspection. So if there are additional inspections, I mean, we can limit that. I just need direction if that's something that
So I think as a joint powers authority, you probably have the same rules that a city does to establish a fee. And so there would be, I don't know, Jen, if you can add a bit more, but there's probably like a little fee study that's sort of done to
Yeah, the fee would have, the fee would have to be limited to basically covering whatever your expenses would be associated with the permit. It sounds to me like you're saying $80 might be an okay range for maybe the time being, but it might need to be a little bit higher.
Again, as far as we'd have to determine the time that's being spent and it sounds like it would be additional time. So I would assume that that would be an additional fee. I don't know the other cities, the fees that they, that they have incorporated for this, but that would be something to take into consideration as well.
But so I think at the end of the day, there is a process under, I don't know, is that a government code section? To establish the fee and as a joint powers authority, they are a governmental entity and so there is an ability for them to get cost recovery on their efforts associated with this. And I think that is what would be envisioned and they would have to go through the right steps to do that.
All right. Well, then, yes, if it was 15,000 square foot lots, we've got the HOA thing and we have, you know, CASA working with for enforcement, then working with the city to figure out a way of enforcement, then yes, I would be willing to move this forward.
I have another question for Erica. The lot sizes of our adjacent neighbors are large, but the survey sample that you used was a lot broader, correct?
Yeah, the survey that we did, it had a variety of, you know, requirements, had the setbacks, it had the lot size. The model ordinance that we kind of fashioned this, our recommendation after, really spoke to not restricting the lot size.
And were, were there a lot of the cities that did not have a lot size minimum for poultry?
There were, there were some. In the cities that did have it, as the commissioners have pointed out, if you had a half acre below, then there would be a higher number of hens that would be allowed based on that. So it was kind of relative. So if you had a larger lot, you could have certainly more than six or go up in higher numbers. So that was certainly true from the survey.
Okay, thank you. I have a follow-up question for staff. I guess, I'm a little, because this is moving forward a pretty rough draft to the council, and I'm a little reluctant to pigeonhole a number, fifteen thousand square feet. Is it, I mean, could we move this forward with the provision that with some further investigation into municipal sizes of lots, that the council could come up with a number that fit for the plan?
Yeah, absolutely. What you're doing tonight is just, like we've discussed, a recommendation, so I would feel comfortable with saying that you would recommend that they establish a minimum lot size requirement, and then the exact number could be filled in at a later point in time if they choose to follow your recommendation.
I, I think that would, if I'm, correct me if I'm mistaken, that that would facilitate quicker resolution, because they were, they're not gonna have to take a number that we set and say, no, that's not a number we like, let's go back and work. It would give advice to staff to do some more research into sizes of lots of what works, and then when it moves forward to the council, they have more information to move on.
Could I ask a question, follow-up on that?
I'm done with mine.
Really, it looks to me as if the fifteen thousand square feet is sort of a standard in ordinances, it exists in the Dana Point ordinance also, under nine point oh seven, keeping of animals in residential districts. Three established the fifteen thousand square foot lot. So that's where it's established, and I hear it being carried over in all the other, you know, old county areas, Laguna Nigal, fifteen thousand, you know. So I think that the fifteen thousand square feet is pretty well established for keeping of animals.
Vice Chair O'Connor, did you have something else?
John, do you have a comment there?
I, it's, I just wanted to give you some additional information. I don't have the exact numbers, but we had looked at this previously for some other development standards totally unrelated to chickens, and I, and the average lot size is, of the city is somewhere around six thousand. So if you limited it to, I would say, more than ninety percent of the properties in the city are way less than fifteen thousand. So if you made fifteen thousand a minimum, you're talking very, very few properties in the city that are that size.
And I would follow with that. It's because we are not an agricultural community. Laguna Hills has, you know, they're Nellie Gale and horses, and that is, you know, it's more, it's agricultural there. And Newport Beach also has a horse agricultural zone where, you know, obviously they're using half acres. You're trying to take, or what we're doing tonight is trying to take light agricultural and force it into residential one. And you can't, it's just not the right thing to do. Now, if, you know, Elise Oviedo, they don't have large lots either. I, I couldn't tell from your, let's see, okay, not permitted, all right. So the reason why is because they have small lot sizes, it's a higher density community, just like Beach Road, just like, you know, certain areas around town. I mean, I, I can't, I, you know, Commissioner Newkirk had mentioned, you know, could we have city council establish the lot size? I, if that were how we were going to send it up, I can't vote for it. I, I would vote against it, because I think we need to, to do our job right now, and the council is asking us what we think. And that's, you know, how I feel.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair, if I may, I think it's a good point that John brings up, though, just in terms of your consideration and your deliberation on this. I think the essential question before you is, do you want to allow chickens in residential districts or not? And certainly you are welcome to your opinion on either side of the spectrum of that. But if you create a standard that essentially prohibits them, you might as well keep the ordinance as it is today, which prohibits them. Or if you want to allow them, then look at standards that, in rules and regulations that would allow them. And I would only ask that you consider that in your deliberations.
Well, my feeling still stands, then. It, it shouldn't be allowed, we could, we should keep the status quo.
How about a straw vote here? Okay, if you're the only one voting, how are you gonna vote?
Well, I have to tell you that I really thank you for your comment, Ursula, because that's really, you know, either you're for them and you're going to create an ordinance that allows them on six thousand acre lots, or you're not. And I, I'm, I'm really, I'm, I'm torn about this, to be honest. But when you ask me, where in the city does this go? Well, it's really not gonna go where I live, okay? It's, it's not gonna go in any HOA in the town, there are a lot of them. There's just really a few places that this is going to go. And, I mean, I mean, I'm sorry to throw this out, because this is kind of the last, but maybe there should be an overlay. Certain area of, you know, of Capo Beach, there's an overlay versus in every single residential zone, because, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out of the thought. So anyway, I have to say, though, that Commissioner Connor, you're very convincing. But I, you know, you're very convincing, and, and I really want to be fair to everybody on this. And as I say, you know, where my son lives in San Diego, it really isn't a problem. But it's, these are not, he doesn't live on a small, he doesn't live on six thousand square foot lot, you know? And that's, and I have to tell you, I can't imagine anything more disgusting than my only window for my bedroom to get a breeze in our hot summers is, has to blow through a chicken coop. I, I, that's just terrible. I would never want that situation for anyone to have to live through. So, you know, you're asking me my, this is it, I have to give it. I, I deserve the right to change my mind, but right now...
And put a condition of approval on it.
As a chicken.
It's hard. You try doing this, you try doing this, it's hard. I'm gonna vote it down.
Commissioner Dinton?
I might change my mind, though.
Well, I, I, I think that CASA has answered the permitting process. I think they'll put it in place and make sure that people are doing the right thing. They have to get a permit, that's something we talked about in December, that we originally didn't have in front of us then. I'm convinced that they know what to do about animals, how to do it, make the inspections, make sure that the people are meeting the requirements of cleanliness and, and treating the animals right. But again, I go back to what I originally said, whether it's right for a six thousand square foot lot to have six chickens, I, I don't know. I'm not interested in having chickens myself. My neighbors have two dogs, and they're a big enough pain and smell, and I watch the rats come every night to their bird feeder and eat from their, their bird feeder. So, you know, I, I heard a lot of things tonight about these things, but again, I think the staff has put together an ordinance based on the information that they got from their research, which I think is extensive. It's a lot of work, a couple months' worth of work has gone into this. Now, I think that decision on whether it'll be fifteen thousand square foot lots, or an overlay, or six thousand, or whatever, I think is, is gonna be something that the city council is gonna make the call on. Frankly, I think that's, that's why they get elected, is to decide what this city is supposed to be about. And in the, on the way to it, our job is to make sure that what is sent to them is fully thought out, is got all the detail for them to make a informed decision when they review this. Whether we make the vote down or vote up isn't gonna really probably affect how they're gonna look at, at this, if they are pro-chicken or anti-chicken. So from my standpoint, my vote is to send it forward and let the, the fine details get worked out at that level by our elected officials.
Once again, I'm falling into Commissioner Dinton's camp. You know, I, one of the gentlemen this evening said, you know, speak from your experience, and I've got experience with it. I had ten years of neighbor, neighbors behind me that were chickens. There were no problems, no issues, they were quieter than any other animals that were in the area, other than my cat, except when he was in the morning wanting to get fed. You know, this, to me, just is a real classic fear of the unknown, you know, people that have not been around them. You know, they don't know and understand, a dog not kept properly can be a huge health I, you know, I, I think the staff and what they prepared shows that the, the chickens can coexist with humans, they have a, a valid reason and purpose, they contribute to the quality of life, and I don't think they're a detriment to the quality of neighborhoods. And I think that lot size and things like that can be nailed down. I'm, I'm comfortable with moving the policy that was crafted by the staff forward.
I also, on a straw vote, would, would vote this down, the reason being that I don't really think we have a plan. And it seems we talked about sending it to, to city council, but if memory serves me, I believe city council sent it to us, and I think it's our job to not just toss it back to them. And I, I just, I don't see a plan here. I see a possibility. I, I certainly think it's viable, but I, I don't know how to get there right now. So I would, I would vote it down if I had to.
With, with that, Madam Chair, I'd be willing to make a motion. Make a motion to not recommend approval to the city council for the zoning ordinance and municipal code text amendment ZTA fourteen dash zero 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 one, and local coastal program amendment LCPA fourteen dash zero 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 one, for the, for the allowance, which is really not to allow, of poultry, specifically chickens in all single-family residential districts.
Okay.
So to clarify, a yes vote is a no vote, and a no vote is against the no.
Yes, correct, I mean.
Okay. But we still do need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Now, what, how do you vote again?
Yeah, yeah, right.
A yes is to disapprove it.
No, well, I, correct. To not allow chickens and not move it forward. So a yes is to not allow it. But I don't have a voting thing, do we? Okay.
Mine's not coming through either.
Ah, there we go. All right.
I don't have one either. Hit the green button on the top left.
Today? Yeah, hit today.
Today.
I got you.
Okay.
So that motion passes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes to not recommend approval for chickens.
All right, Madam Chair, where are we going next?
Okay, we're going to old business. We've been with this long enough, it seems like old business, okay? There is no old business. We move to new business, there is no new business. We move to staff reports, do we have any staff reports?
Yes, I would like to let you know that we are going to cancel the regular planning commission of February twenty-third, but there will be a special meeting, a joint study session of the planning commission and the city council on Wednesday, February twenty-fifth, at six-thirty here in this chamber. The subject of the study session is the Lantern District Town Center Plan. There will be no action taken that evening, rather, it is a presentation and discussion to answer questions and provide an opportunity for the planning commissioners and the city council to ask any questions. Parking will be a large topic of that, and the amendments that will be necessary to the town center plan relative to implementing some of those parking recommendations and some other minor amendments to the town center plan that, as we've tried to implement over the last year, where we found some holes and discrepancies, whatnot, that we will be bringing for discussion as well. And that concludes my staff report.
Are there any other staff reports? Okay, are there?
No, I don't have anything.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I had all sorts of list of new standards to include in the chickens ordinance. I'm done.
We'll be looking forward to seeing those at a later date. Commissioner comments? Any commissioners have anything to say?
I have a question, Ursula, is that at six o'clock on the twenty-fifth?
It's at six-thirty.
Six-thirty?
Yes, yes, but I believe there will be food served beforehand. You will get an email with the exact time. Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner comments, no? Commissioner comments? No? Commissioner comments?
No, I just wanted to say thank you, it was quite a dramatic and vibrant discussion. Probably one of the more interesting topics we've ever had on the planning commission. So, thank you.
Commissioner Newkirk?
And on a non-agricultural note, anybody that enjoys golf or casino activities, March thirteenth, which is a Friday, the thirteenth, the Dana Hills baseball team is having a golf fundraiser and casino night at Royal Tribuco Golf Course. All the money proceeds go to the baseball program, which are terribly underfunded these days, any sports or school activities. Information can be found on the Dana Hills baseball website, which is danahillsbaseball.com, and it'd be great if you could support the team and the program.
As your check-in chair, I will do the adjournment of the February ninth, two thousand and fifteen, planning commission meeting to our, but it won't be to our regular, I am not adjourning to the regular meeting. What am I adjourning to?
I'm just...
What is the next one? Is the next...
I thought that one was being canceled.
March ninth is the next regular meeting that we can adjourn to.
Adjourning to the March ninth meeting. Okay. This meeting is adjourned.